The staff and board is here to be ready so we will call the board to the regular meeting of the Town and Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners for Monday, June 9th through the 14th.
Turn the volume up please.
Okay, we'll ask for a moment of silence to begin. Mr. Burrell, will you leave us in a place?
We please rise when we please believe it.
We institute the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
Thank you. First order of business is our consent agenda. It appears to have three items on tonight, the minutes from May 20th, the minutes from May 27th, and the setting of a special meeting for June 16th to your report from Tim Lee Horn and to continue our budget deliberations. Any amendments to the consent agenda or any items need to be pulled?
Motion that we approve consent agenda?
Sen.
All in favor?
All opposed.
If that is unanimous, leave the consent agenda as passed.
Excuse me.
Next order of business will be citizen matters. We have two speakers signed up to speak. First would be Susan Little.
Mayor Terry and commissioners, my name is Susan Little. I live in Chatham County and I serve as the chairman of the museum that's located on the first floor of this building and as a member of the Chatham County Historical Museum, excuse me, as the Chatham County Historical Association, and I'm a board member of the association. Tonight, I've come for two things, one to thank you and second to give you a quick update in three minutes. We thank you for the support that you gave us two years ago when we came asking for your help when we developed the museum. I want to report to you, we opened on time when the building opened in April 2013, and we opened with every bill paid, which was $150,000. So we, we are pleased that we were able to do that and to be starting solvent. We are open Wednesday through Friday from 11 to 4, and we are open on first Sundays. Some statistics for the use in the first year. Total visitors, 1,788. Now that's people who actually signed the register. We have had some others, of course, who came who did not sign. We did not keep tally the opening day, which there were probably 1,000 people. We have served 550 Chatham County 4th graders. We've brought them for 4th grade tours. We are an all-volunteer organization. There is no paid staff. And we have 32 volunteers who are making this happen. I would just give you a statistic from April 2nd to May 9th this year. 28 volunteers gave 284 hours of service in this building. They gave hours of service as leaders, as leaders of 4th grade tours, and then welcoming people up for Sunday. I'll just give you a heads up that on September 13th, Saturday 13th, we are hoping to do a really fine tour of Pittsburgh, of houses and buildings, and I may come back and give you more about that in the future. I would just close by saying to you, whatever, whenever and whatever change may come to Pittsburgh and to Chatham County, this history is written. It's a story that's already been recorded, and we believe we have tried to capture it and preserve it for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. The speaker is Randy Fuller.
Town commissioners, Mr. Mayor, and our staff, I just want to thank you for all of your service. Having served with each and every one of you, Bill, having been our town manager and done Newman's work for five and a half years, I think the community needs to know that you don't have big staffs, you don't have large salaries, and you don't have spin doctors to help. Now, I have a little experience now traveling the state and the country meeting such folks. And I'm going to say right now that the people in Pittsburgh should be proud to have folks like you that have taken the time to lead, have come up here in the breach, and are doing the best job you can. At the end of the day, we're all human, and I'm here to thank you, having been on the board with you and served with you. So thank you for your service and thank you for the staff, and frankly, we need more of you and more of the staff.
Thank you. And I'm reminded now that I need a motion to approve the regular agenda, which has two items on it, under order business.
Second.
You?
Sen.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved. The first item of order business is the request of zoning property at 115 East Street and 119 North Small Street. Mr. Bass, will you introduce this one?
We had the public hearing on May 27th, 2014. There were no additional comments received, so if you have any in your packet there, a description and ordinance.
Okay, we see, we received a fairly extensive briefing from Mr. Bass on the public hearing phase. If there are any unresolved questions on the part of the board that we've asked those now, or entertain a motion on the zoning ordinance memo.
Motion to approve.
Sen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. The motion carries unanimously. The zoning is approved. Our next order of business is the zoning of Preston Development, Chatham Park Plan Development District Master Plan. Mr. Manager, how would you, how would you like to introduce this?
Well, first, I would direct you to the memo that was placed in the packet, which provides an ordinance and a resolution, and the two are exclusive of one another. The ordinance would actually amend the zoning ordinance for the town of Pittsburgh, Chatham Park. The ordinance that you originally have in your packet is supposed to be replaced by one that was put in front of you this evening with just a couple of minor changes. The change up at the top would be that it'd be a reference to the date of June 9th, and then there would be another statement while we're in the document referencing, referencing public interest, which paragraph. So, paragraph three had a statement regarding language and public interest, and those were terms, I guess, that were agreed upon by the town attorney and by the applicant's attorney. The ordinance to amend is pretty self-explanatory, and the terms are stated where within, if you, if you choose the alternate, that would be a resolution to actually deny the application on the same basis that those issues that are required to be met in fact were not met. Also, in your, in your packet this evening would be two other pieces. One would be a document called amendments to the May 2014 Chatham Park Plan Development District Master Plan, and that's a document that is in black and red, and it's like we don't have a projector this evening to bear with me, but it looks like, looks like this. And those would essentially replace, replace certain language elements within each of, within each of the chapters, be amending number one, number two, another paragraph in number two, number three, number four, and there's some, some suggested language And then today, there was an additional reference that was forwarded to you, and it looks like this, and it's just two items that would be placed in additional language. It would be put in addition to the last piece I mentioned, and that would be amendments to, amendment to May 2014 Chatham Park Plan Development District Master Plan. Again, two different, two different pieces that should be in black and red, speaks to stream buffers and to parks and greenways. And again, those were, those were additional elements, and we can talk about those in a little bit. The other issues that we have would be if, if you choose to amend the zoning ordinance, then the master plan, the section 10, paragraph six of the master plan, would compel the applicant to, quote, "defray additional costs expected to be incurred by the town in dealing with the development in Chatham Park," and essentially providing the wherewithal for the town to be able to deal with the increased development impact. And you'll recall that back in November, we also had an agreement that could have been reviewed, but as you'll recall, the similar ordinance was tabled at that point until further steps could be taken. So it is, it is my understanding and recent experience that we've, we've had some additional discussions with the applicant on such an agreement. If you choose to amend the ordinance, approve, to approve the ordinance and thus amend the district allowing the PDD, then what I would recommend doing is, is that, as we agree to aggressively review this agreement, the terms are in place, I think, from a staff perspective and from the attorney's perspective, we have, we have the terms essentially in place to do that. It would be simply a matter of, of having your approval on it. So tonight, what we're looking for is either to approve the ordinance, which would amend it, amend the zoning ordinance, establish the PDD, or approve the resolution, which would deny the ordinance. Those are essentially your two choices with this. I might go into, if I could, just, just a statement of how we, we got to this point. I won't go into a lot of detail about 2013, but you'll recall that the May, in May, the document was originally submitted to the town. We had subsequent meetings and public hearings. We had a workshop in August. We had meetings with service providers, stakeholders, and staff. We had two additional submissions of the master plan, one in October and then one in November. You'll recall then that one in November was tabled until we could have additional consultant review of the plan. We held a workshop in December and discussed the plan as it was submitted in November. In January of this year, we made the decision to hire the consultant, the Lawrence Group, and we held subsequent meetings with the Lawrence Group, with staff, and with the applicant, with the town attorney. The consultant developed a report, which you heard in this room in February, and the town subsequently reviewed the consultant's recommendations, accepted most of them, modified a few of them, and then ultimately asked the consultant, staff, and the applicant to go back and review seven remaining issues that the consultant had prepared. In April, mid-April, I submitted a document or a memo that outlined those seven issues, remaining issues, and our mutual response to those. At that point, following that presentation and discussion, you had, the consensus was that the applicant submit, could submit another revision to the PDD, and they did so at the end of April. Following that, you scheduled and held a public hearing in May, on May 20th, and then on June 9th, you elected to have a vote, or I should say, at the last meeting, you elected then to have a vote on June 9th, which is where we are at tonight. In essence, at risk of oversimplifying it, we, we have just a few remaining issues on this. I think the document that we had back in November was probably the most progress that we had made to date on it. I think the Lawrence Group report did provide some very valuable input in terms of making the document definitely a better, a better piece in terms of the vision statement. I think it really highlighted some of the need for us to discuss the conservation issues and parkland issues and density issues. And I think that's where we are, where the ball's currently in play right at the moment. It is within those issues. Now, having said that, I think that in the most recent revision of the document, you can see where the applicant has, has made some steps to address those issues, particularly in terms of how, how land is buffered along streams and how property would be buffered along the Hall River. Certain references have been made to the Southwest Shore Conservancy, and they feel like they've, they've put in some diligence in terms of protecting the area that's near the Hall, which I think everyone agrees is probably our most critical step at this point. So I think we've come a long way. The document that we did, I think that we did settle on initially, and some of our biggest concerns when we first started really going through it, would be a lot of the same issues that Mr. Terry worked on by predecessor during his time here, and that was, that was how do we plan for utilities and infrastructure? How do we organize our staff around increased development? How do we protect the town in terms of being able to provide those utilities and infrastructures to the, to the development over the years? And I think Mr. Messick and staff and the applicant put in quite a bit of work to make sure that the town is adequately protected in those cases. In fact, we cannot allow for more than 5% residential or 15% commercial without having a number of plans and contingencies in place within a two-year period. We cannot, we cannot allow development or approve development that does not have an adequate infrastructure plan submitted to us and approved for that particular piece of development. We, we feel like, in a lot of ways, that that part of it, we feel like we're adequately protected. So from that standpoint, you know, what we, what we have now is, I think, a very critical decision for you guys to make. We've certainly had a lot of discussion, and we've had a lot of input from a lot of different people over the course of the last year plus, and, and I think now we're in a position, and obviously you are too, to really make a critical evaluation of whether or not we're going to continue this work. Now, keep in mind, as you recall from previous discussions, that this, this is not the end of, of our planning. This is not the end of our work. As I mentioned before, there are a number of plans that we have to undertake within, within a given period of time, and without those plans, they can't fully develop. So there's a mutual interest in, in terms of the applicant and the community to get those things done, or else the development simply cannot take place. And I think that was, again, reflective of a lot of our mutual efforts in protecting the community and making sure that the town was protected too over the long, over the long term. I guess with that, I would open it to any discussion. We're certainly available to help with that. Again, our ideal outcome on this would be that you as a board feel like you, over the course of the last few months, have been able to take in the, all of the information that you've been provided and hopefully make a decision. This was not a tap out.
Thank you, Mr. Gruzbeck. I'll just reiterate what the manager said. This has been a long, long process, a lot of hard work by a lot of people, and I commend the developer for their patience in the process and their willingness to sit down and negotiate on various issues. Over the last week or two, myself and other board members have, I assume, been doing the same thing, which is rereading the master plan, rereading a lot of the papers and documents that have been developed in terms of analyzing the plan, and I think where we are tonight is at a point where we'll have one more round of questions on behalf of the board. Any commissioner who has an outstanding question they want to ask, and I have some that I'd like to ask, clarifications, possibly some other minor changes, and then at the end of that process, we'll see what is the will of the board with respect to a vote. It's the will of the board that will vote tonight, and that, and that'll take place at the end of the discussion period. With respect to kicking this off, what's the will of the board? Would you like to start at one end and go to the other, or start at the beginning of the master plan? What's your preference?
Well, I think one thing would be valuable is to, well, is to announce what these latest revisions are to the master plan. These are the latest that are following a, a public hearing, and I think it's important to, to know what changes have been implemented in this master plan, I think, as a result of the public hearing. And I'll, I'll go through this and note that the plan prior to the public hearing stated that there would be a 500-foot buffer on the hall in one section. There are only two sections that adjoining the hall, or don't even adjoin it, but go within proximity of the hall. And one, one section was 500 feet, the other was 250. Many recommendations were to make it a minimum of 300, and that has been accomplished. So it's 500 and 300. There was a suggestion that within 1,000 feet of the hall, step back and graduated form as to density from the hall, and that has been incorporated. For streams flowing to the hall, in areas where there are endangered species, the perennial streams will now be buffered, 200-foot buffers, intermittent streams with 100-foot buffers. Those are recommendations from the state. There's been a, an amendment to the activity centers, which will also have recreation areas within them, and that contiguous acreage has been increased from one acre to two acres. So in each of those areas, there will be a two-acre public park in the middle of it. Open space have been a topic of conversation, and based on the metrics of density, the development is setting aside 1,320 acres of open space. We asked the developer to make that a minimum regardless of the density. That 1,320 acres of open space will always be within this property. At the end of the project, there won't be a statement that we couldn't quite get all the density on the property, therefore, we don't have to provide 1,320 acres of open space. That will not be a discussion that happens with this statement and amendment. There has been an increased and accelerated rate of delivery of recreation space. Prior to this amendment, the requirement was 15 acres of parkland per 500 residential units. What this requires is 20 acres of parkland for every 500 residential units. So that's an acceleration of the delivery, and again, if the density of the overall project is never quite achieved, there's more parkland in the project upfront. Today, the modifications that came in, the map references to the buffers talked about 100-foot stream buffers on perennial streams and 50-foot buffers on intermittent streams. Pittsburgh's code today is 50 for both. We asked that the developer make a clear, concise statement, not associated with any map, but just in writing in the text. And the latest amendment says 100-foot stream buffers for perennial streams and 50-foot stream buffers for intermittent streams. And the last amendment today was, there was a lot of discussion about what would qualify as parkland, and some of the parkland may be private, privately provided, privately maintained. And today, the applicant has agreed that there will only be a maximum of 10% of the entire rec space provided to the property that will be owned and managed and maintained by a private entity. That will be, 90% of the parkland will be open to the public. And those are the amendments.
Mr. Mayor, one of the, one of the things that we said we would do on this meeting would be to give the, the board would address the recommendations made by the advisory boards that had made recommendations, and it felt like as our advisory boards, we should at least have some discussion about the things that they recommended, and that was something that we agreed last night that we would do. So that might be also a good way to start. And that would be the person, the board and...
I don't recall that. I recall that we were going to make, we were going to, as a board, make our final recommendations or requests of the applicant, if we had any, to include in the master plan. I...
That was concerning. I listed last time that we had advisory committees that made recommendations, and we at the board never even had a conversation or discussed them or anything like this, since they're disrespectful to our boards. That was my understanding. That's what my intention was when I brought that up.
Well, I, I think you're certainly enabled to discuss the recommendations that were made by those respective boards this evening, but I believe that they've already made presentations to this point in a number of different format, formats, inside of this public, private, electronic. I think it's, it's really up to you guys now to begin the discussion of some of their very hard work and some of their findings.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that they speak again. I'm just suggesting that they made recommendations, and we as a board never, ever discussed these recommendations, and that just was my suggestion.
I'm embarrassed to say I don't have the first preparation of any board comments with me, but if you do and you want to, if you do them, I certainly would be a problem. Got a lot of stuff here, but I didn't, I might have a piece with me.
Is that convenient, or do I have someone from the parks board? Okay. That's a long background.
Well, you can, you can summarize.
Okay. Their purpose was a conservation buffer of the Hall River, and they suggested that we honor the 2,000-foot conservation and open space designation along the Hall River as adopted in the 2012 Land Use Plan. And it seems that the general gist is that the Land Use Plan, which we spent a number of years creating, designated a 2,000-foot buffer along the Hall River as an open space and conservation area. This place type describing the town's vision for future development patterns states on page 98 of the plan that development in these areas is generally discouraged. There appears to be some confusion regarding the fact that the conservation place type explains the provenance of the 2,000 buffer. To avoid further confusion, perhaps it's best to quote the relevant section in bold. Conservation includes floodplains, a 2,000-foot wide buffer along the Hall River, and public lands associated with Lake Jordan. The buffer along the Hall River is consistent with Chatham County's low-density stream buffers, which limit density to one unit per five acres. Development in these areas is generally discouraged. It should be noted that none of the future development pattern map place type descriptions, including open space and conservation, recommend a specific densities within a given place type. The zoning map describes specific densities and uses within zoning districts. The zoning map has not yet been updated to reflect the recommendations of the Land Use Plan. The future Land Use Map and the zoning map cannot be used interchangeably and should not be confused. That's the first one. We can start off with that and then discuss it.
Yeah, I think we ought to dispense with them one at a time, so before you move on to the next one. Anybody wants to comment on that? Is there support for 2,000-foot buffer?
Well, I'll just say, I do believe that they recommend, I mean, we did, we spent a lot of years working on the land use plan, and it's like, this is the first development that comes along, and we're kind of scrapping so much of it. I would, I personally would like to see, instead of, to stick to, I know I'm happy about a lot of the amendments that the developers made, and I can't talk to you, but the one that talks about one unit per acre, if we follow the recommendations, it would be one unit per five acres. And so that's the thing I think that we must need to discuss. I would say that the one, one dwelling unit per five acres in that designated area.
That's the first band of development.
That's been identified by the land use plan.
Well, I know this board is aware of that, and at a meeting, I don't recall which meeting it was, but it was several ago, this board asked the developer to deal with a 1,000-foot area from the hall and to set aside 500-foot, 250-foot buffer, but then to graduate the density. We asked them to do that, and they've accommodated that request. They incorporated it into the master plan. So, you know, I think we were all aware of the land use plan and what it said, and we're looking to balance that land use plan with some of the other requirements that this plan includes that address the land use plan. And in balance, I'm of the opinion that we do adhere to or are consistent with the land use plan where we achieve so many other goals of the land use plan and provide for a good, I think, remedy to development along the hall. I think the land use plan also makes mention of the idea that that density is associated with well and septic, and that this project is going to be delivering public water and public sewer systems, so can accommodate greater density. So that's why I'm very happy with where the plan is right now.
It's not what the land use plan says.
Yeah, I think we had some discussion about the use of the term buffer and how we may be using interchangeably with a 2,000-foot wide zoning district. So I see where there's some confusion there.
That's what I mean. It's just that it says less dense development, and it says one for five acres, not one for one acre.
I understand. I had some notes on the same subject, and while I wasn't prepared to advocate for the 2,000-foot buffer tonight, I was wondering why we had a difference in the northern section, between the northern section and the second section. What would be the problem with having the 500-foot in both areas? Could the developer respond to that, perhaps?
Mayor, the board, the 500-foot was established for parkland. It was specifically to create the linkage between these two state plans there. The 300-foot is established based on the input from the Department of Interior and its suggested buffer in that area of 300 foot. We originally had 250. The recommendation, the guidance came through that's listed in your EIS for your street and plant to be 300. That's why the two different ones. We expanded the other to create the length that we'd always set between those two state parks.
Would the developer consider making it 500 in both places? Is that, is that too obvious an impact for you to consider?
We have established the 300-foot as the buffer that we agreed to, and that's where we'll agree to have.
Okay. Well, I'm asking if you were willing to add that there.
No, sir.
So I have a question in reference to what you were just reading about the 2,000-foot wide buffer along the Hall River. So, Mr. Terry, are you saying that you think that that is not, it should be another word instead of buffer? Is that what you were thinking?
Well, I think you used the words interchangeably. But I think the stream buffer is one condition in this conservation area along the Hall River was 2,000 feet wide. It was not that no development would be allowed in there, it would be very light development. So it was different from the term that I understand a stream buffer to be. So, yeah, I never envisioned it as a 2,000-foot development, a 2,000-foot restriction where there would be no development in that area. It was a conservation area where development would be restricted to very light development.
Yeah, but that's how, that's how it reads it. Maybe it's the best, because I kind of know what that was included to. I don't think it means no development.
I'm talking about the buffer, and the word buffer. Should it be another term instead of buffer? Because it seems sort of odd to have a 2,000-foot wide buffer in our, in the land use plan, and then in our ordinance, we say something different. So basically, that's totally inconsistent. So maybe they were thinking of another term instead of the term buffer.
I think if they just said conservation zone, that's old business now. I could have documented it around four years ago, but it continues to trip us up.
Right. And so in order to clarify that, I actually don't have a problem in reference to the buffers, because for one thing, some of this area is not actually that much of Chatham Parks. A lot of that is owned by the state, which is alone the Hall River, and so therefore, the state has parkland there. And basically, they're specifically talking about two specific areas, which of course is the 500-foot and then the 200, the 300-foot. So I don't have a problem with that. And then the Department of Interior, federal government, has required that 300-foot buffer. And so they are consistent with the terms of what the federal government has required. But I think the problem lies in that term, even though it was years ago, the document was written. I think we need to sort of clarify that and properly update that.
Because this is not just an issue about Chatham Park, this is also an issue about future development, and I guess we as a board have to decide how committed we are protecting the drinking water for not only Pittsburgh, but Durham, Apex, Cary, and all these different people that depend on the Hall River, and that's why that zone or whatever you want to call it. So I think we have to decide. We can't, we have to be consistent. Whatever we do with Chatham Park, we also have to do with future development. So it's really important that we're consistent.
Absolutely. That's why one reason we need to clarify what we say here specifically in reference to that. But yes, we should be consistent with all developments.
Well, and we allow that opportunity because we're going to embark on the rewriting of all of our ordinances through the unified development ordinance process, and that will be an opportunity to revisit every code that we have and to raise the standards accordingly.
I have a question regarding the land use plan.
Well, so as the 19th law, we got probably a lot of board issues to discuss. So as the 19th law down on 81, can I just take a straw poll? Show of hands, board members. If you're satisfied with the developer's offer to provide the 300-foot buffer in the northern section and the 500-foot in the southern section, which indicated by a show of hands, please.
Well, excuse me, sir. I also believe that another issue is whether to allow one dwelling unit per acre or one unit per five acres. I guess that's what it says in the ordinance. According to the Parks and Recreation Report, I personally think that's what it says under the law.
Okay. Do we, you want to deal with it as a single item? Not, not following you.
I think it should be a single item.
Can I see the, I'm sorry, anybody? So your point is that the land use plan says the density in that buffer could be one unit per five acres. And what does the master plan purpose say?
Oh, I think it says one dwelling per acre.
Okay, well, it seems to me there are two issues. Can we deal with it?
I almost think the 2,000-foot wide buffer needs clarification. Part of the other one's not clarification. So.
So what's the will of the board? How do you want to proceed to resolve Commissioner Foley's question?
Well, I think we should decide whether we're making a request of the developer to amend their plan and how to amend it if we agree we want to make a recommendation or a request.
Well, as a starting point, do you want to propose a change and see if you get support from your fellow board members? Right now, the buffers are 500, and the density is one dwelling unit per acre. And now standing, is that correct? Everybody agree with that?
Well, and it, but it's graduated.
But in the first band, it's one per acre.
Yeah, just talking about the first band. It's not clear. I wish there was someone from the planning board that can address this.
From, from Parks and Recreation?
The one, I mean, there would be a field to address the land use. Mr. Bass? That's what I'm looking for.
Well, we have time. Watching the show.
Can you describe what was intended by the 2,000-foot wide buffer along the Hall River?
I can try. It's been several years ago, so my memory is probably a little bit sketchy. I don't remember having a lot of detailed discussion about it. It showed up on the 1992 Future Land Use Map, and to the, there was, that was it, you know, it was a diagram. And so we took that, put it in the last update, and attempted to describe it in some fashion. It's probably unfortunate that at the same time, we were required by the state to adopt a regulatory riparian buffer, or as was specifically required, so was Mary Terry suggested. It's, they don't mean the same thing, two words, and probably the hindsight buffer is not quite the right word. You know, areas of environmental concern or something like that, the land use plan is aspirational. And the idea was that this was the only plan that's an important area.
Well, with that clarification, would you like to make a specific recommendation for a change right now? Like you said, right now, we're at 300-foot buffer in the northern section, 500 in the southern, and the density currently in that plan appears to be allowing one dwelling unit per acre. Do you have a counterproposal that you would offer up?
No, I'd just like to see as to respect the buffer that was set aside by the land use plan and to decrease the density in that area to one dwelling per five acres. That would be what I'd like to see.
So you're, so we leave the 300 and 500 densities, but reduce the density to one per acre is it? What's your proposal?
Yeah, I would just, this particular issue brought up by the Parks and Recreation Board discussing the 300 and 500 buffer. So I was just guessing that they would want to do this.
Okay. Let me try, let me try. Praying this is a question of the board, just as a show of hands, so we can resolve this one and move on to it. If Commissioner Foley's proposal is to ask the developer to reduce that density from one dwelling unit per acre to one dwelling unit per five acres, by show of hands, who on the board would support that request? Is it one? Is it only one vote to do that? By a show of hands, how many would support a request to change the 300-foot buffer in the northern tier to 500? So you know, support for that request. Can we move on to the next question of the partial recreation advisory board?
Okay, number two is open space. Require 30% of the project to be designated as open space, not tied to final build-out. A large, multi-hundred acre nature preserve would be ideal. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board concur with the recommendation from the Lawrence Group Consultant to require 30% of Chatham Park's land area to be set aside for conservation and open space. We have seen evidence across our area citizens how their value conservation and fill with this provision is reflective of our community values for preserving land upwards and higher value. And it's quite long, I'm going to hold that. I'm sure we've all read this. And basically, it's requesting this developer to provide a several hundred acre continuous contiguous natural area within the Hall River Conservation Buffer, containing upland mature hardwoods, would demonstrate great vision, great leadership, and would yield a legacy for future generations of prosperous industries.
Well, why are you all contemplating that? I have on my list a related question and position that speaks to the same issue. From the Chatham Park Master Plan, page two, the first line says, "Chatham Park is a vision as a comprehensive live-work-play community that will preserve open space and create parks. It's my opinion that the master plan does not deliver on the vision and promise in its opening sentence, rather it asks for the maximum possible density permissible on the footprint of the PBD, provides the applicable statute with minimum of parks and open space required by the town's land management codes. The requested density could be acceptable with increased provisions for parks and open space, or the minimalistic allocation for parks and open space could be acceptable with a reduction in requested densities that more closely approximates what could have been built under the existing land management codes and what was contemplated in the land use plan. Asking for the mass, maximum possible density coupled with absolute minimum for parks and open space does not feel acceptable to me." As a recommendation, I would suggest that this issue should be reopened in a reconvene meeting at a staff level negotiating group, and the developer's view toward reaching a more suitable balance between density and open space and parks. If the Lawrence group recommendation of 30% of the space and 10% parks could be attained in the current requested densities would be more acceptable. If the proposed allocation in open space and parkland cannot be increased, perhaps a 20% across-the-board reduction of density could be acceptable, bringing the total density down to 17,600 dwelling units and 17,600,000 square feet of non-essential uses. This would still be a development of monumental proportions and might open the door for a future negotiation of trade-offs between density and open space parks during the small area plan review process. Such a negotiation would not be possible now because, as I've noted before, the density requested is just about as big as humanly possible to put on this footprint, and the open space and parks requirement is about as minimal as our regulations require. So that comment on my... So that comment on my behalf supports what Commissioner Foley is addressing there.
Well, I would comment on that, but in fact, this master plan provides more. As a combination of what is required in our codes, this map plan exceeds anything that our code would require of any developer, when it is looked at from the lens of combined open space and rec space. When we think about density, the average density over this project in the residential areas is three dwelling units per acre. The greatest density in any section in Chatham Park in its master plan is 10 units per acre. As we juxtapose that to the existing development we have in our community now, which is a mixed-use plan development of Powell Place. Powell Place allows for a density of average 3.5 dwelling units per acre, greater density than Chatham Park, and allows for a density up to 20 dwelling units per acre. That is something in our community right now. So the density is not that extreme as I think being portrayed. More and more communities are recognizing that density is a good thing from an economic perspective, that you need density to make your infrastructure cost-effective. You need density to make transit work. So this project is coming in the door and saying, "We're going to be not as dense as I'd like them to be," quite frankly. So that's a little perspective on how dense this project is going to be or is for planned to be. I'll leave that.
I have some thoughts on that as well. My concern is that we are granting them a great deal of density. They're talking about a multiple high-rises behind Northwood High School. They're talking about a mall that's the size of South Point. It's 22 million square feet of commercial space, which is seven times more commercial space than in Durham, and 22,000 residences. Our PDD ordinance says, "In return for greater flexibility, plan developments in this district are expected to deliver communities of exceptional design, character, and quality that preserve critical environmental resources and provide open space amenities." And the question is, is this exceptional, what they set aside? Well, I did some homework. There are several other mixed-use developments in this community. One is Farrington Village. I asked them how much open space they had at Farrington. And this is based on parks, walking trails, the same kind of formula that Chatham Park is using. Farrington Village has set aside 46% of their property. I asked Briar Chapel, with some assistance, the same thing. Briar Chapel has set aside 57% of their development. So when you think of it in that those terms, especially given the importance of the watershed in this particular development property, we're talking about a watershed, they're predicting for a million people. 28% of open space, which is combined parks and open space, not just natural areas. It's just not enough.
And I would add, you know, I asked the attorney, and he answered me, and I assume he'll be happy to repeat his answer in the meeting today, but I asked him the question, a question about the legal definition of vested rights and what it means to approve this zone. With the language in there that 22,000 dwelling units are allowed and 22 million square feet of non-residential was allowed, it was my sense, from a layman's point of view, that once we do that, then we have no future leg to stand on to reduce that amount of density. And the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong in that perception, but my proposal to go back and revisit this and either decrease the intensity or increase the allocation of parks and open space, or some combination thereof, would leave the option open in future negotiations around each small-area plan, would leave the possibility on the table to trade density for additional parks, facilities, amenities, and whatnot. So the finality is, you know, we can always give them more, but we can't take back, I think, the vested... The issue of vested rights means that once we say they get 22 million, and 22,000 or 22 million, then they've got it for forever, essentially. But if we were to arrive at some other solution, that was some combination of more parks and open space and less density, and in the future, as we review small-area plans, there could be trade-offs that could move that density back up towards a larger number. That's my logic.
Mr. Messi, could I inform you all that, please?
Yes, ma'am. I wouldn't characterize it as a vested right. I would characterize it as something that the developer would be entitled to the town.
It's not a vested right, but it's part of the plan, and it would be a capacity or density that the developer would be entitled to, if you approve it.
I just want to add to what I was saying, that I'm actually very excited about Chatham Park, and I think it's going to bring a lot of prosperity to Pittsburgh. It's going to bring not just jobs, but good jobs, and I'm very much looking forward to it. I am definitely not against this development. I'm excited about the downtown possibilities. I really want to be on board with this project, and that's the one piece that's missing for me. And if that was addressed, then I'd be... I'd feel a lot more comfortable with it. But that's just a very important piece to me.
Okay, again, so as not to the labor, I think we made our points. By show of hands, are there board members who are... Let's frame the question this way. If you are satisfied with the allocation of 22,000 residential units and 22 million square feet, and the level of open space and parks commitment that is currently in the document, if you find that satisfactory, please indicate by show of hands, so we can move on to the next item. Two, one, two, three, four, people are accepting of that. Okay. Commissioner Foley's going to address that. You said there were several issues. Well, we have all that to...
Number three is payment for parks. Require the developer to pay for improvements to the parkland dedicated to the town. The P A R A V, once again, concurs with the town consultant, who reiterated on the April 14th VOC meeting that, as written, there was no expectation that parks would be improved before they would be reserved or dedicated to the town. He stated that the units being built in Chatham Park would create the demand and need for new parks. It is very common, he continued, to require that those parks be improved and not simply turned over and let the town pay for the improvements at some point in the future. Otherwise, you might face a situation where the land would be reserved and dedicated. Then 10 years later, the town would have the tax funds to build the parks. Several paragraphs, but it says, "Regardless of Chatham Park, I recommend that the town move rapidly to fund a study focused on assessing impact fees, as well as a study creating a defendable methodology for assessing dedication fees in lieu. The developers have verbally consented to meet whatever current standards are required at the same... At the time of site plan submission. This would be explicitly stated in the master plan." See if there's anything in the others. I think that's the most.
And to Dove, Kelly, I would support that, and I have a comment in my sheets here as well on page 34 of the Chatham Park Master Plan. I think you could accomplish that with the addition of the following text, and I think there are at least some board members that believe that that commitment is already in the master plan, if not explicitly, then it's implied. But you could make it explicit by adding paragraph five to page 34 that says, "The expectation under the Chatham Park Master Plan is that the developer will deliver fully constructed and operational parks to the town at the developer's expense. The selection of architects for parks designed and designed process will include the active participation of the town, including final review and approval of all park construction plans by the town. Construction of parks will be accomplished by the developer, at the developer's expense, using the town-approved design and with oversight of the town staff during construction." So addition of that paragraph would address the commissioner's concern. And I think Commissioner Fiocco, I saw an email from Music, that you thought that was at least implied, if not explicitly expressed.
Well, my comment in the email was that our existing subdivision ordinance describes recreation area as improved recreation area for active recreation. So I think that is in our ordinance now. Our ordinance provides for the town's ability to choose, which is the priority recreation amenity that would be required in the town. And it also gives the town the option to take a payment in lieu, instead of requiring construction, that the town could then use in its own possible production or construction, or possibly just as a way to preserve open space. If the town felt as though passive space were more important for any particular parkland area, that's one method that it could be done. The other thing to know is that if, in fact, we get to the point where we're approving this master plan, one of the conditions of the master plan is to enter into a development agreement. And in that development agreement, we will talk about all kinds of measures that will be incorporated as to financial obligations of the developer. So I don't think it's necessary. I think we've got it in our code right now. And that's something to note, remember, that anything that's in our code right now is applicable to this master plan, unless this master plan concisely writes a different ordinance for itself. So any regulations that are approved subsequent to the master plan getting approval, any subsequent regulations that the town adopts will be applicable to this development.
Could we hear from the developer if that sentence, that paragraph I read, causes you any difficulty, or would you be happy to add that?
I think I will refer to Mr. Fiocco's comments on that. It's already in the town's ordinance, and we will abide by the town's ordinances.
Yeah, well, I'll just make the point that this language just reconfirms that, and it sets the bar at a certain point. And like I said earlier, with respect to the density, we can always lower the bar during the small-area plan review process if we want to relieve the developer of a responsibility to fully develop something. That could be accomplished later, but this language simply confirms, makes it implicit with, or makes it explicit with, is now sort of implied. I'd feel good if you add that to the paragraph. Next point.
Number four, treat greenways as part of the transportation network. Require the developer to pay for these in full as they will the rest of the transportation network, including roads and sidewalks. This is accepted practice in many communities and would be appropriate for Pittsburgh. If the private developer doesn't provide these greenways, the expectation is that the public at large will subsidize their construction, existing residents as well as new ones.
So I guess I would need a reminder on what the master plan says on that subject. I assume the reason Parks and Recreation Advisory Board put that in there is because they thought it was not fully addressed in the master plan.
I thought it would say that.
Could you read that, Paul?
Treat greenways as part of the transportation network. Require the developer to pay for these in full as they will the rest of the transportation network, including roads and sidewalks.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, this is from the Parks and Recreation Board. I don't know either. Treat greenways as part of the transportation network. Require the developer to pay for these in full as they will the rest of the transportation network, including roads and sidewalks. This is accepted practice in many communities and would be appropriate for Pittsburgh. If the private developer doesn't provide these greenways, the expectation is that the public at large will subsidize their construction, existing residents as well as new ones.
I wonder if that's sort of redundant from the discussion we just had, if a greenway is in effect part of the open space and parks structure, and if the regulation already requires that those be delivered fully operational and constructed, then perhaps it's two sides of the same coin. The developer submits a small-area plan that shows greenways on it and parks. And I think the expectation would be that they would build them. Paul Horn? Did you hear that question directly to you? Could you step up here? Commissioner Foley had a question for you.
No, just it's like the board is struggling to understand they treat greenways as part of the transportation network. Do you have any insight on that?
I think the distinction there is if they're counted as parkland, if there's a set amount of parkland, this... And the greenways is treated differently from the version... I think that greenways changed actually in this latest document. I think at one point, developers had actually intended to be providing the greenways unless they were in a park setting. If they were in actual park, then they would count as parkland. I believe that's changed in the last iteration of the document. But I think the idea is to treat them as a transportation item, rather than parkland or a park feature, thus they wouldn't count against the parkland set aside. If they're 677 acres or whatever it is, greenways would not count towards, against that parkland, that they would be treated more like sidewalks or a part of the transportation network. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, sidewalks are part of the transportation network.
That's correct. They would be treated more like a sidewalk. They would be treated more like a sidewalk unless it's a park per se.
Just for clarification, by greenway, we mean something like the Bowlin Creek Greenway in Chapel Hill that's a
Yes, sir.
Approximately, I don't know, what is it, forty feet wide with a twelve-foot trail or a ten-foot trail that's paved and
It could be any width, it could be very narrowly prescribed, it could be as simple as a side path along a highway, or it could be three hundred some foot buffer, not buffer easement around it that winds its way, or it could be, it could look like any number of things. Greenways are very broadly loosely defined entity.
So the parks comment seems to suggest that they believe the master plan would allow that to be counted as parkland, and they're objecting to that, saying that it should be treated as a conveyance system.
That's correct, sir. And funded as such as a transportation item, not as a park.
Well, let's ask you off of the master plan. What's your understanding of how greenways are treated?
One of the conversations with Mr. Lewis pointed out that often greenways are into the part of parkland. So, but specifically in the master plan, it says that greenway includes an easement outside of regulated buffers may be applied towards meeting land area requirements for parkland. It's a process of the town's acceptance of parkland. We had the situation arising where we're looking at if you have a park and you have a park, the linkage between those is as much a part of the park as not. So it's a question of what the town will accept as greenway. Later in that same paragraph, it says, "Greenway locations shall be generally consistent with the parkland use plan map and will be constructed to town staff." That's at the top of page thirty-five. Bottom of page thirty-three, top of page thirty-five.
Okay, so for clarification, it sounds like the developer's in agreement that they will build these greenways. The question is whether they'd be counted as parks or not be counted as parks.
And that's up to the town, where we were showing some special circumstances, that the greenway itself would be as much a part of the park as the parks. And we have to show that to you in the master plan, in the small area.
So it sounds like the Parks and Rec would like to count it as a roadway and thus not count as parkland, and Chatham Park developers will have to count it as park. Is that correct?
It's left to the Board of Commissioners to decide whether they want to.
But if we decided to do the greenway, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
If we did choose to, if we voted in favor of greenways, it would count for parkland in your interpretation?
No, no. When we go in and put a specific greenway in front of you in the part of the small area plan or detail parkland, just like any other park that we bring to the town and say, "This is parkland that we propose to meet our requirement," the town has to actually accept that parkland that we offer for dedication. Town has to accept it for us to get credit for it. So the decision for whether the parkland or the land under greenway also is that is still in the hands of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so we can move on. Is the, what's the consensus of the board? Do you feel like the master plan is clear enough in this regard, or do we need to be more specific about how we'll treat greenways? If you would like to see it clarified and acceptance of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's recommendation, which would, it sounds, exclude greenways that are connecting park facilities or running parallel with sidewalks and streets, it would exclude them from being counted as a total of parkland. If you would like to see that incorporated in the master plan, please indicate by a show of hands.
Mr. Mayor, regarding that, I believe we should just consider that in our small area plans. And it should be in through the master plan at this time.
I guess the decision is whether or not it counts as highway and transportation, and therefore it wouldn't count, it wouldn't use up the park allocations. I mean, even though we would decide at that time whether to do on greenways, it's determination by the case. It has to be decided now.
Well, I think, I think they're going to build them.
But it's going to ease up the park.
If, if in fact the town board accepts them for public recreational uses. Seems that we've got all the ability to make that choice in the future. And, you know, some greenways are going cross-country and linking up parkland, parkland to other recreational areas, and that seems to me to fit the idea of recreational. In fact, I think greenways are one of the most popular Parks and Rec amenities in all communities.
Is our sidewalk something?
Well, I don't know. I don't know that I think of sidewalk necessarily as a recreational use. I think more of it a transportation. So where a greenway is in close proximity to a roadway, it may be that it is more, it qualifies more as a transportation amenity as opposed to a recreation amenity. And we could make that call in the future, or future boards could make that call in the future.
Generally from
If I could, if I could, just as a real world example, we currently use sidewalks as part of our transportation system, largely because we can apply pollable money to the ability to maintain greenways. We do not. And whether we could would be another question, but I don't believe we can apply pollable money on a greenway. So from that standpoint, I, from an administrative perspective, probably wouldn't be inclined to consider a greenway a part of the transportation network, if only because of that little point you had, the bureaucratic distinction, for what that's worth.
And then also, from my understanding, when we do receive that this is approved as a small area plan, at that particular time, if we do not want to consider that greenway as parkland, then at that time we would say, "No, we will not consider that." Because we still have the power, if this is approved, to deny something at the small area site plan, because they have to submit a site plan to us on anything that they're trying to do. So it's always our option to say, "No," that we don't want to consider this greenway as part of the park, as designated as part of the park.
And to sort of dovetail off what Mr. Bruce Beck just said, thinking back in my past life, in Chapel Hill, streets, sidewalks, those sorts of transportation elements were managed by the engineering department and the planning department, and the greenways were, projects were managed and constructed by the Parks and Recreation Department. So I would support what Mr. Bruce Beck just suggested. So is the, what's the consensus of the board? Are we, are we satisfied that the master plan deals with the issue of greenways adequately? If so, please indicate by a show of hands. Okay, I'll move on to the next one. At the end of the
And then one more. Private parks do not equal public parks. Private parks and recreation spaces should not count toward meeting public park requirements. As proposed, private parks within Chatham Park would be counted toward meeting public recreation requirements. Private parks are not necessarily open to the public and hence do not meet the needs of the general public. Private parks and recreation facilities are welcome, but should not count toward meeting the town's public parks requirement. Morrisville has language in their subdivision ordinance, which would be a good model for the town, and clarifying this policy should the Board of Commissioners feel that it is
Is that something we would address when we address the ordinance itself, or no?
Well, I think with the amendment offered today by the applicant limiting the private park area that can qualify or to meet the overall park requirements, limiting that to 10% goes, speaks to that issue. So if in fact that is included in the master plan, then it would override any future ordinance requirements, because it would be a very specific statement on recreation space.
And I feel that private recreation areas will enhance the real estate and it serves to enhance, to, it serves to improve property values of that development. But if it's not open to the public, it doesn't seem to me that it should count as public park.
Yeah, and I would, I would support that. I'll give you a couple of examples, again, from my chapel experience. The Chapel Hill Country Club is a lovely facility. It has golf course, swimming pools, tennis courts, dining room, all manner of things. But it costs tens of thousands of dollars for an entry fee to get in there and a one-time initiation fee and then a very expensive annual membership dues, or you don't get to use the swimming pool, tennis courts, golf course, and club. It seems to me totally inappropriate to count that as recreation space for a town. Whereas there is a swimming pool also at the Meadowmont subdivision that's primarily meant for the use of the residents of Meadowmont, but anybody can walk up, and I think Meadowmont citizens can buy an annual pass and get a reduced rate, but anybody is allowed to walk up to the gate and pay three or four or five, whatever the fee is. But it's open to the public for a fair market fee, and a facility like that, I would have no issue with counting it as part of the parks and recreation facilities. So generally, I'm in support of the, of the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, that to the extent that we have facilities like tennis clubs or golf clubs that are restrictive and you have to pay some very large entry fee and an annual dues, that's really not public and shouldn't be counted. That's, I think that's what they're getting at, and I would support that.
I can actually support that too. I don't think private parks should be counted.
So is the consensus of the board then that this offer of holding that to a minimum of 10% is not satisfactory, and we'd like to hold that to 0% of those very restrictive club-type facilities should not be counted? Everybody who's agree with me, please show, show hands.
Before we vote on that, from the applicant, do we have an idea maybe that what kind of private park we would be looking at in the future? Just, are we just possibly swimming pools or?
It will be swimming pools, tennis courts, ball fields, basketball courts, things like that. I understand your position, but this, these recreation facilities that we will build will take pressure off of public parks, because people will be using these swimming pools that live there and other things they won't be using, while they're using those, they won't be using the public facilities. So in about half the communities we develop in, you can count private and half you can't. We thought this was a good compromise at 10%, because here again, if you're swimming in, swimming pool for homeowner association, you're not going to be swimming in the swimming pool for the town if they propose building. If you're going to be building, playing on a basketball court for, that we built for a homeowner association, you won't be playing on a basketball court for the town. So we felt 10% was adequate for that. If you don't like that, I'll strike. Okay, considered as.
Yeah, I don't think we need to show a hand, the developers agreed to take their provision out. And I think that makes sense, just not to belabor this, but the country club style recreation facilities, the developer wouldn't build those anyway, that a homeowner association or a gated community or something might choose to build that and create that club-type facility. So I think that's appropriate. Yeah, okay, thank you.
And that's it for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Commissioner Foley, any other points you want to raise now, or do you want to take a break?
This is such a long document, there were I don't know if you want to address some, my voice needs to rest, but it was issues that were raised by a member of the planning board.
No, I don't think we should address them. That's just my opinion.
There were three different things that she, that she brought up.
Well, some of those, I don't need to use her document, but so happens we agree on a few things, and I don't agree on everything she had in there, but they agree on some of them, and they'll come out of comments that I'll make from my memorandum here. I'm happy to wait to go at the end.
No, I can do that.
Okay. Mr. Farrell, any questions you have of the developer or the staff?
I did have a few questions regarding the buffers. I am pleased with the buffers, the revisions in the buffers. And the, a couple of things that I have, no questions, nothing, but over the years I've heard about economic development for Pittsburgh and Chatham County, and I just want to go and let everybody know that this is a fine opportunity for Pittsburgh and Chatham County to gain this economic development. And I really hope that we can push forward with this vote and get this passed and move forward our UDO. I think the master plan is well thought, it's been worked over very well from commissioners, our staff, the developer, and all. And that's, that's pretty much how I stand on this. And this is a rezoning. Not everything is in detail right now, but this is a rezoning for this land, and that's what we're devoted on.
Mr. Turner? We can alternate here. I'm going to ambush you. You have questions you'd like to ask?
I don't have any questions at this point. Just to sort of echo what Commissioner Farrell said, I mean, there's several extreme ways to look at this, which I think we have done, and I think that there's some, also some middle ground, and that's what I've been trying to find. And I think the revisions to the master plan, as per the consultant, have been good, and, you know, not everything's going to be perfect all the time, unfortunately, and it may sound trite to say that, but I absolutely support economic development. And the person that spoke, who was the manager of Bojangles at the public hearing, said that there were 450 applications for 110 jobs, and I think we can do better than that. And I think that this is an opportunity that will help us do better than that. So, not that I have anything against Bojangles, but that's some intense job numbers, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Baldwin, any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions. However, I do have a comment. This, I think this is a good plan, and when I did run, I ran on economic development and plan growth, and this is a prime example of plan, plan growth. Actually, the consultant did a great job, our staff did a great job, and there are things which will be ongoing in reference to tweaking this particular situation. However, again, this is a good plan. I do believe it's a good plan. And instead of having a lot of developers that are coming in and there being different type of strip malls here, strip malls there, this is one that you can see thoroughly through. So basically, this to me is a good plan, and as I said, that was what I ran on, plan growth. From the time I initially ran up until the next time that I was re-elected, that was always a plan growth and economic development, and to represent the citizens of Pittsburgh as well as Chatham County. So, and we have heard from the citizens in reference to this, we've tried to do things which can alleviate their concerns, and through working with the developers, our consultants, and through our town staff. So we will continue to work with them, hopefully, and if this is approved, then we will certainly go forward.
I've got two, I think, clerical issues that I'd like to ask the applicant
I've got two, I think, clerical issues that I'd like to ask the applicant to consider. And the first one has to do with the small area plan procedure for approval. It's a proposed approval path from the applicant, and I want to remove it from the document in its entirety. Procedures for approval of small area plan. I'm on 45. And essentially, it lays out a path forward as to how the town will review a small area plan. And while I think this is a good starting point, I'd like for staff to develop their ideas on how they're going to do this. I know that the planning board did talk about this at some length about the timeframes in here, and I want to make sure that our staff are comfortable with their ability to perform these tasks in this timeframe. And so, as opposed to having it in the master plan, I would request that the, oh, I recommend and ask that the developer or the applicant agree to remove this from the master plan.
What we have in the master plan is a suggestion that was up to the board to approve. If you would like for us to remove it, I'll be glad to remove it. If we could use that as sort of a starting place when we do meet with staff to start a plan, so that's on the table as a suggestion, I'd be glad to remove it as you suggested.
Okay, I think that makes sense, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Fierco, you regarding all eight, 10 of these?
Yeah. Let this be a starting point for staff.
Mr. Messe, do you have a view on that? Do you think that that would impact us at all?
So the attorney supports removing it, okay. I had several comments for modifications of it, but if we're going to...
Mr. Mayor, before you make those modifications, we have people in the audience who cannot hear at all, especially this good commissioner here, maybe it's the microphone. If you could help with us so that we could hear properly, it would be very...
We're going to try and do better at that, thank you.
Thank you.
I think if we could pull the microphones closer and if our sound tech can help us with the volumes. I did have some suggestions for changes there, but that's kind of a moot point. If it's the consensus of the board that we're going to remove that section, would that be bringing to do that? Anybody favor removing it?
Is it necessary to remove it or just use, leave it in there as a guide?
Well, I think we're going to pull it out, so it's not in the master plan, and use it as a guide, so the staff can work on it. And then, it's really a town approval procedure that doesn't need to be in the master plan, just like we don't need to put in this master plan how we're going to approve a site plan or a subdivision plan.
So it'll still come up with the procedure, but it'll be from the town, it'll still be part of it. I think that makes sense.
My other comment was one of clarity, and unfortunately, it may not be as clear as I want to be because there is a sentence, shoot, I had it marked as page 38. Okay, it is on page 37, just beneath the parkland development timeline example. And it makes the statement that open space will be identified in each small area plan. The following sentence seems to suggest, though, that that land that is shown in the small area plan is not ultimately going to be required in that small area. And I think for clarity, what we're stating is that not all small areas will by definition contain open space. Any of the small area plans that come in for review and approval that do show open space on there will be binding on the applicant. And I want to make sure we're clear there because I think this language could be misconstrued to say, "We're going to show you this on a small area plan, but we're not actually going to include it in the small area plan." So...
I want to be clear what you're talking about, so...
Says, "Open space shall be identified in each small area plan based on the proposed uses."
Yeah.
However, the open space provided does not have to be placed in the area covered by that small area plan. What it is, that is intending to say is the open space for that density of development in the small area plan is actually dedicated over in this area of the site, and at that point will be committed to and dedicated and protected from development. Any small area plan that does in fact show open space in the plan, that will be required to be dedicated and protected from development.
So you're not in favor of being able to say, hey, we've got some more important open areas somewhere else?
I'm in, I am.
Okay.
I am absolutely in support of that.
All right, just trying to be clear what you're saying.
But what I don't want to do is have a small area plan that shows open space, and then when a site plan comes in that includes that area that is claimed as open space, say, "No, we've decided to move it over here."
Okay.
No, at small area plan, we're going to fix it. It's going to be established then that there's either open space dedicated in this small area or the amount that would be required for the small area is over here.
Okay, I like that. Some areas are more important than...
Right, right, exactly.
Thank you.
Is that clear enough for the applicant to do a rewrite there?
It's actually, I'm not sure it needs a rewrite. I believe that it's okay what it said there because that is, Commissioner Fierco has read the intention exactly right. When it's identified, it becomes identified in that small area plan. But as you were alluding to, the special open space might be in the next section. We have to identify it there and it becomes locked in with that particular area. So we meet the requirement for the open space, and in fact, it applies to parkland also, that we put the parks and the open space in the best places, and once they're done, they're locked down. It doesn't just get to move around later on or something without your approval or something.
If everybody feels as though it's, it's clear, I just wanted to make sure the intent was understood and that it communicated, that intent.
So are you wanting to rewrite that to make it clear?
I think, I think, yeah, I think you could make it a little more clear.
I think so.
Okay.
You just said that the quantity of open space shall be, the quantity of required open space shall be identified in the small area plan based on the proposed uses. However, the required open space does not necessarily have to be placed in the area that's covered by the small area plan, comma, it may be assigned to a different small area. That amount may be assigned to a different small area. But, something like that?
Yep.
Pretty simple, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I have a few things I'm going to go through here and try and be respectful of everybody's time. Many of them others have already covered. So I'll read through these quickly and to help folks, I am, I went through the master plan page by page, so these will be in order. Give you the page citation if you want to follow along to help you do that. On page three of the master plan, I'm suggesting that after the sentence, also a wide variety of housing choices will be provided. You would add the sentence, "This will include a commitment that at least 10% of all dwelling units will meet the definition of affordable housing to be negotiated and included in the affordable housing plan listed under section X dot 1 dot G." To quantify a commitment to affordable housing, even though we have yet to define whose definition we're going to use. How does the board feel about that?
I'm comfortable leaving it to the additional elements where we're providing them two years to develop this plan in conjunction with our production of a UDO that I think is ultimately going to include an affordable housing component in our UDO as well. So I think we provided the space and time to do a well-considered plan, and I would hate to require something that at this point isn't, I think, well-thought-out. There are very complicated issues associated with affordable housing, and to put just 10% on it, I'd like to leave that for further consideration.
And I thought that's what the consultant recommended, too, was to, this is not the appropriate place for that.
So all board members are comfortable with deferring that to the development of that section? Show your hands. I think we'll pass that one up. This is, this is a question primarily for the attorney. He's asked, he's answered it to me, but I need him to answer it for the public and the rest of the board. As required by the town zoning ordinance, the PDD zoning and the PDD master plan shall be treated as a single item when acted upon by the board of commissioners. I'm waiting for the attorney's opinion, that's not attorney, where he gave it to me. I'm waiting for the attorney's opinion on, as to how we can comply with this provision in light of the fact that the Chatham Park master plan is not yet completed and will not be completed for up to two years. If the town attorney advises that we can disregard this element of the ordinance and make exceptions when deemed appropriate, it would be my preference to opt for an exception where we choose to act upon the zoning only and leave the approval of the master plan until a later date. This course of action seems less objectionable than approving a master plan that's not yet written. We could simply approve the rezoning and allow the 5% to 15% of development to begin under our existing land use codes. Mr. Messick has answered that for me, but I'd like him to repeat it and elaborate for everybody's benefit.
It's a bit of a moving target, but the master plan is complete. We've amended it two, three times here tonight already, but in my opinion, it will be complete and you can adopt it and you can resume property. The fact that there are additional elements to be done in the future is not saying the same thing as the plan is not complete. It's a part of the plan, and those things have to be done, but the plan itself is finished. If you all get through it, I'll just bring it to us.
Okay, understood. On page six, a simple change, I recommend to change paragraph, paragraph B I I I, paragraph one to read, "The PDD master plan will also include other items or plans as shown in section 10, additional provisions." And what that does is changes, it simply changes may to will, and it eliminates the word that the applicant chooses to include, several are suggested in the PDD master plan for Chatham Park. So it's a simple text change. Instead of saying that master plan may also include, it says it will also include. It says that it'll include, that the plan is that the applicant chooses to include. I think the, the plan is that the board and the applicant have agreed will be included. So you have, you have a copy of this, it's my item number five, and I don't think it's that should be too complex.
I know, I'm a little confused. Everything in here that is committed to is a requirement. This is saying that they may actually submit additional plans that are not included in this document. May also include other items or plans that the applicant chooses to include. Otherwise, everything in this plan is a requirement.
That's not the way I read it, so it's fairly confusing. We've listed everything explicitly that I want them to include.
Right.
So I'm trying to say that.
We've, I think we've already said it. Is there some doubt as to whether or not the small area plans are required to have all the plans that are associated with a small area plan, or that there are additional elements identified that aren't requirements?
Again, this language started out saying the PDD master plan may also include other items or plans that the applicant chooses to include, several are suggested in the PDD master plan at Chatham Park. And I thought we were requiring them to include those that were listed in section X, not that they may choose to include them. So we...
Mr. Messick, can you weigh in?
Page six.
There were additional elements, five, that we started with, and then there were recommendations from the board. Those recommendations we included in, so as we said, it says we may add them and we did add them. That was the intention of that.
Okay.
It's, and, and those were all the, we had the original additional elements, and then all the rest of them, the first five, are the ones that the board asked us to include, which we did.
Okay, I understand. I'm just saying that this change makes that more clear, and I'll just ask the developer to look at it, and if you come to agree with me to make that change, you don't need to commit right now.
Mr. Mayor, the additional elements are specifically listed in section number 8 anyway, which is what's going on.
I understand. Okay, we already dealt with that one. On page nine, I would change the sentence, the following sentence to read, currently reads, "This table will be reformatted to match to the fullest extent possible the future adopted development ordinance, but will retain all uses as listed in the PDD master plan." I would strike certain aspects of that, so that the sentence reads, "This table will be reformatted to match the future adopted unified development ordinance," period. I think I, you have a copy of it, it's my item eight on page nine. Takes out the qualifiers and just makes the statement better.
The purpose for, to the fullest extent possible, to meet half the use that is allowed per, that is constructed, and then it wasn't allowed, we all changed titles, some were fit, it was to try to match to the fullest extent possible. But there may be some cases where we don't find it's an exact match. And we, we know that the staff and the board doesn't want to deal with two different tables of uses, that was our intent, but we wanted to make sure that we had enough of the flexibility in there to resolve those little nuances that may pop up. That was, that was the purpose of that statement. Now, that statement came by, it came about because of staff comments about the issue of having two separate tables of committed uses and needing to merge them when they come together. We don't know what table committed uses you will actually finally adopt.
Is the board happy with that response?
Yes.
Okay, in this regard. Page 10, I would suggest to strike out the following text, "Areas of section 1.5 and 4.5 not used as public parks will be transferred to and become part of adjacent section or sections. This revision shall be made without approval of small area plan." My comment is... My comment is that if the plan is to develop these two areas as town parks, I can't conceive of a reason why the town would not accept them and they're fully constructed and all conditioned, so I'm not sure why we need to talk about taking that land and putting it into a joint area.
Mayor, if the town did not accept those as parks, we didn't have them, we would still need to bring them to the, we think they're good locations, but there have been public comments that didn't like those locations. We felt like the board needed to do it and if not, we needed to know what we were going to use that land for. If they weren't accepted as parks, and that's what we were trying to be clear with there, that they would become part of the adjacent park or the adjacent section. It's just a question-
So, what, I don't understand why you have to move it from one section to the, for some reason the, the town decides they don't want fully developed parks, they're wanting to just leave it as open space. They're small, they're, both of them are very small, as I recall. Why would you move them into an adjacent area?
Because it's not, it's not, there's no use in there that's allowed by the way it was set up, other than park. And if you find you only want half of it or you don't want it at all, it may become open space, but it may become calculated into the adjacent side, the park decided to. If you didn't increase the numbers, the numbers would still apply from the adjacent section. It would just be over a larger area.
So, if the town does not accept the land by dedication as a public park, then that offer would then be rescinded and that would want to be incorporated into an adjacent area that still would not diminish the amount of parkland required-
No, by no means.
-in the project and simply would relocate it somewhere.
Yes, we still have to meet the requirement.
I understand that, but why not leave that, why not leave that land in the area where you're not going to use it as a park and leave it open space and put some houses there? Why would we move it?
We have no houses, we have no houses listed to put there.
There's no density in this section because it's-
Would that be worked out in the small area plan that we said we don't want the parks?
We have, under the table of uses, the chart that shows how many dwelling units or how many square foot, square feet and non-residential, those two were left as zero, only for the purpose of public parkland. But once we saw a lot of the comments that people were saying they didn't think that those were maybe the most appropriate parklands, we felt like we needed to be prepared in case the town did not accept them.
So, those are standalone areas, they're not currently part of any area.
That's correct. They're standalone areas, that's correct.
Never mind, I understand that. Oh, this is an easy one. Page 13, 400 dwelling unit reduction discussed on this page is not yet reflected on the land used planning map in section 1.1. So, you read take out 400 dwelling units, you show it on the table, but you don't show it on the map, so that's, page 13.
What you're saying is the land used map, the small text-
Right.
Yes, sir, you're correct. We'll make that adjustment.
Okay, but the next-
The numbers, yeah, the numbers are not updated, right?
It's just that one was the only place it was revised by form.
We changed it in this text.
I know, but in addition, I just, it could be, just be taken in.
Yeah, but this was, that's the red text.
Right, that's what I'm saying, this will be updated.
Okay, my next item, 11th, on page 16, I'm going to continue to beat the dead horse of utilities. Just offer the following comments in the last paragraph of this page, page 16. "In my opinion, it's erroneous to characterize a 3.2 MGD wastewater treatment plant or even a 6 MGD wastewater treatment plant as a very large plant. Plants of this size are in fact very small plants in comparison to other town facilities." And offers an example, the Owassa Morgan Creek plant, which supports all of Chapelville and all of Carrboro, as a 14.5 million gallon per day plant. They seem to do just fine with a single centralized plant up there that is probably characterized as a medium-sized plant. Next item on this subject is, "A centralized wastewater treatment plant need not be an impediment to the use of reclaimed water. We already have a reclaimed water line running, so if a 3M plant and additional customer connections could be made along this line. If we are successfully completing our 3.2 MGD wastewater treatment plant, we will have an effluent line running east from the wastewater treatment plant to the Hogg River that will contain reclaimed quality effluent and that line can be tapped at multiple locations to feed reclaimed water towers within the Chatham Park footprint. With respect to issues of stranded capacity, a well-conceived plan that incrementally grows our wastewater treatment plant from its current 0.75 MGD up to a next level of perhaps 1.25 MGD, third iteration to 2.25 MGD and finally to the full build-out of 3.2 MGD over several years can and would minimize the issue of stranded capacity." I don't need a reply from the developer or a comment, just those are my comments and we're not finalizing anything with wastewater treatment. I just felt the need to express those concerns.
I just want to say, I agree with you that the idea long-term, having one wastewater treatment plant as opposed to five smaller ones would be less expensive to operate, less staff, all those kinds of things. I agree that we should consider one larger than five smaller.
My item 12, on page 18, "On the subject of wastewater treatment technology, while I agree that technology, while I agree that generally technology advances can occur rapidly and unexpectedly, I believe that it is fallacious to suggest that wastewater technology has been developing and changing at anywhere near the pace of other technologies such as computers, electronics and telecommunications. From my point of view, the wastewater treatment plants that I see today are pretty much the same as the ones I maintained at the Marine Corps Base Chronicle, Virginia back in the early 80s. Include headworks, bar screens, grit removal, aeration basins, digesters, clarifiers, flood removal, dispersal, disposal, sand filters, disinfection, either UV or chemical. Pretty much the same components that I learned at the US Army Engineer School in 1978, 1979. To suggest that we should expect quantum leaps in wastewater treatment technology over the next five to 10 years, I believe is overly optimistic. I can see no technical reason to delay a detailed planning and design necessary to move forward with the expansion of the town's wastewater treatment plant." If you'd like to respond to that, I'd give you an opportunity, but don't require a response.
I don't want to appear to be disagreeing with you.
Oh, go ahead.
But I will at some point, but just to provide a foundation maybe for why I'm about to do and my frame of reference, without getting into a lot of it, I've worked across a very large footprint with a lot of trade associations, I'm a rep on a number of research organizations, the Water Environment Research Foundation, Water Research Foundation, the Water Research Foundation, I've worked across multiple states. And part of what you said is true, but it's because it's been a self-fulfilling prophecy in terms of the way technology has been diffused into especially the public space in water and wastewater utilities. Excuse me, that's changing dramatically. Everyone from EPA to all those organizations, to investment people, to big water companies are all looking at how do we improve the pace at which we can diffuse technology and innovation into this space? Because it needs investment and there's money sitting there, but the pace is too slow. The risk-reward ratio is always been out of whack for single-purpose municipalities. That's why WeWork has a program called LIP, Leaders Innovation Forum for Technology, which is a compendium of regulators, utilities, consultants, academics that are all working to screen and vet technology, create collaborative means to implement it, which then spreads risk, diffuses risk, gets the regulators on board with it, and that's been very successful. There's a number of things in place today, working, that were unheard of 15 years ago. I mean, some of the things, and I'll mention two just because they're very near and dear to parks here in terms of the lake and that's nutrients, both nitrogen and phosphorus. Nitrification, denitrification and phosphorus recovery are two huge initiatives of this. There are a number of processes that have been implemented, some full-scale, some pilot-scale in places all across the country. And to go to your point of early 80s, one of the keys to shortcut denitrification, where you're eliminating the step to go to nitrate and the associated energy and carbon source required for that, is using an Anamox bacteria, which has existed forever. Wasn't discovered until 1999. Nobody knew it existed. There was evidence that the numbers didn't add up in what was happening in the bottom sediments of lakes and rivers, but nobody knew why until 1999. There are full-scale plants using Anamox right now, as close as Virginia and many others looking. So, there will be what appears to be rapid change in process particularly. There's still going to be pumps and screens and all those kinds of things, sure, but there is a lot more going on than what would be visible from certain vantage points within the industry when we set that. So-
Okay. This is an area where we can agree to disagree and I didn't form my opinion in a vacuum. I consulted with peers and civil engineers whose opinions I respect and I know that all technology is evolving, but I think this, this particular technology evolves in an evolutionary fashion, not in a quantum leap fashion. On page 19, "On the subject of water treatment plant expansion, our utility enterprise fund is currently losing money at the rate of about $450,000 a year. We're not recovering our operating costs, well-run sitting-side funds for future capital construction. The idea that we could fund a major expansion of our water treatment plant by accumulating capital for new customer connection seems to be overly optimistic." And again, that's just a statement on my part, I don't require a rebuttal from the developer unless you want to offer one. Page 15, private recreation facilities, we already covered that. Small area plans, already covered that. On page 21, I'm sorry, item 21, page 47, additional provisions, I would change paragraph two to read the following, and this deals with how we're going to get to a development agreement. I would change that to read as follows, "As soon as possible, but not more than one year following the final approval of the Chatham Park PDD zoning and master plan, the town and the applicant will begin work on co-authoring a development agreement in accordance with section 168, 400 dot two of the North Carolina general statutes with a goal of completing work on a development agreement within one year. The town's efforts in this regard will be primarily conducted by qualified planning, municipal slash municipal law consultant to be selected and retained by the town. Fee for service for this consulting work shall be billed back to the applicant. Any conflict between the master plan and the provisions of the development agreement agreed to by the applicant, the town shall be controlled by the development agreement." That's a, that may seem like a small change, but it's, from my point of view, I think we got off on the wrong foot on several of the steps in this process by not participating equally in the development of things such as our PDD ordinance and the master plan. I don't want to do that again. I don't want to, I don't want the developer to deliver me a development agreement and then have the board nibble around the edges to make changes, to make it, to try and turn a glove into a shoe. I think we need to start working on it together in a teamwork fashion so that the interests of the town are injected into the first draft of the document, not tapped on at a later date.
What changes is that, Mr. Mayor?
Page 47, paragraph two. Currently says, "Within two years following the final non-applicable appeal of the Chatham Park PDD zoning and master plan, the applicant will submit for consideration by the town a development agreement in accordance with the North Carolina statute." I'd rather that we not do it that way. I'd rather that we either town write the initial one or that we have a, we co-author one with the town using a qualified planning and municipal law consultant. I think that'll get us to an agreement that serves both parties better and faster.
I agree with that, that it should be a neutral, not done by the developer, neutral party.
Well, I think the fact that it is an agreement means that we're both going to be at the table talking about it, so I'm comfortable with the two-year timeframe. I think it's going to take, there's a lot of work on this plate for the applicant to work on. There's, I don't know, 13 additional provisions and that's not even including the development agreement. So, I think it's going to take time and I'm happy to give them the time to do that.
I agree. Two years, definitely.
Well, I had to change the two years and I just said we should start no later than one year and complete it within two years. So, the two-year, two-year suspense date remains intact, suggesting that we shouldn't wait for 20 months to get started.
Have you suggested the development agreement would be created by a, that's one thing?
At the minimum, a joint effort. Again, I don't want to, I don't want to get a document handed to me that I get the red line and nibble around the edges.
The PDD ordinance. It has to be developed by the applicant and the town from what this is.
Correct.
Are you in the, just wanted by a third party, is that what you're saying?
No. The original text said that the applicant would write a development agreement and send it to us for, you know, our review and approval. And what I'm saying is, I don't like that methodology. What I would prefer is to have town staff and/or a qualified consultant be actively involved in the original drafting of the document.
I agree, it should be done, should be done to, not handed to us, but it should be a process that the town is part of.
And I don't know why the developer would agree with that, disagree with that. I think we still get to the same finish line and we just, we just have equal representation in at the, at the table as the document's being drafted. To be more, to be a more equitable approach to get to the same, to the end goal.
Mayor, this provision was added by request of the board, these additional provisions.
Okay.
And it was to tell us to get out there and get to work on this development agreement. Now, Mr. Gluzbeck and I have talked extensively about this, that he's not going to accept me walking in and putting something on his desk, whether it be one of the additional elements or tree ordinance, anything like that, it's going to be a cooperative effort. The agreement is truly a legal agreement. This is, there's nothing comes to the board until you're satisfied with what the agreement actually is and both parties have to sign off on that. So, however we get there, we can't make you act on it within a certain amount of time. We are held to a standard that says we need to bring that agreement to you, working with the town, but we have the, we have the, the onus is on us to bring it forward to the board for your consideration. So, after that point, you know, we have to work with the town and make, see if we can get it approved, but the idea, as I understand it originally, was to force us to move forward with it as soon as possible and get it to you for your, for you to consider, because we're only asking for consideration at that point. So, it was, it was more the burden being placed on us to get it to you in a timely fashion. That's what it's intended to do.
And just, I think maybe if I could help too, it wasn't just a matter of the applicant weighing a proposal on her desk and then just had-
weighing a proposal on her desk and then just having me, with my relatively limited knowledge of development agreements, say yes or no to it, we would be incorporating the input of professionals and help as well. And that was from my standpoint, that was our original intent, was to make sure that we had an agreement. And, you know, if it's a unilateral document, it's not an agreement, and so...
I think we can pull that and discuss further discussion about whether, how we're going to proceed with that, and what we've got to think about that. And we can decide if we want to hire a consultant to help or not.
It sounds to me like we're basically in agreement here, the language that I proposed better describes what it was intended anyway, so do we have a problem with the language?
It would sound like the language you were using said that you would have it finished in two years, which we can't force you to do it in two years.
It says a combined effort between the developer and the town to begin...
It's implicit that it has to be a combined effort, because they're not going to know what the public facility needs or the town are. They know what their demands are, but they're not going to know what facilities are available or what the town is willing to do. So, it's implicit that the town is involved in the process, even to lay something on your table.
Got it.
So, if you wanted to, again, as Mr. Culpepper said, this is intended to put the onus on them to come forward and not to wait, because we've got to have it within two years, and the town can't do it by itself, and/or can the developer do it by itself. We said we were going to do a development agreement. We put it in word, and that we have to do the development agreement and bring it forward to you.
Okay. Again, it sounds like you're agreeing with me, and I'm wondering what in the text that I propose is objectionable to you.
So, are you agreeing that we have it covered?
Pardon me?
Are you agreeing that we have it covered here?
No. Let me read this again, and you tell me why this doesn't get the beating of the bulldog, as we say. "As soon as possible, but not more than one year following the final approval of the Chatham Park PDD zoning master plan, the town and the applicant will begin work on co-authoring a development agreement in accordance with section 168-400.20 of the North Carolina General Statutes." I think that's what we all just agreed to, that we're going to work together on this, with a goal of completing work on the development agreement within one year. So, you start no later than a year, and you finish it once you start no later than another year, therefore you have a two-year deadline. "The town's efforts in this regard will be primarily conducted by qualified planning municipal law consultant to be selected and retained by the town. Fee for service for this consulting work should be billed back to the applicant." And then the rest of the text is the original. "Any conflict between the master plan and the provisions of the development agreement agreed to by the applicant, the town shall be controlled by the development agreement." So, what about that is not satisfactory? I think it better describes what we want to do.
We were saying, our legal counsel was saying, that after your second one-year period, if we stop there, it seems to be appropriate for the master plan. And I'm wondering though, where, as I mentioned before, when you say completed within one year, we can't make you complete. There's, that sounds like you're putting a time limit on yourself to actually adopt the agreement.
Okay.
And I would add that I think it's in the applicant's best interest to do that as quickly as possible, because until all of these elements are approved by the town, they are restricted to the amount of development that they can put on the ground. So, I think they're going to be motivated to make this happen.
The agreement to assist the town would cover the expenses for working on development agreements?
And specifically makes mention of that as one of the items that would be...
So, we hope to start on it as soon as possible. As Commissioner Fiocco said, there's a lot of other things we need to do. Attorney Messick has mentioned, there are items that we need to resolve and address. We hope to start on the development agreement as soon as possible. This was what we thought would work. We understand your comment, Mr. Mayor, and we're happy to say we'll start within a year, year, 18 months, whatever, we'll get started on it. But I think beyond that, it's a little confusing to how the, for the master plan to be saying how the town intends to develop, how to deal with it.
I don't know why that would be confusing. We're putting the language in there, and we're approving the plan, why can't we impose deadlines upon ourselves? I don't see how that's confusing.
Well, this is our master plan. We're asking you to adopt it, we just want to make sure it's clear for everybody.
Well, if I hadn't made myself clear, I'm not comfortable with the first sentence. If other board members are comfortable with it, tell me, but it says, I'll read it again. "Within two years following the final non-applicable approval of the Chatham Park PDD zoning master plan, the applicant will submit for consideration by the town a development agreement." That's not how I view the process going forward, that you're going to write and stick on the manager's desk a development agreement, and now we get to nibble around the edges and make marginal changes until we finally get it to where we're happy. I want a developer representative and a town representative to start at the starting gate, the development agreements that protects the interests of both parties. I don't want to have to nitpick and change something that was written from the point of view of the developer, and keep going through, we'll be going through this master plan until we finally get to an agreement that we can live with. So, I don't know, am I not expressing myself, I don't know what we're here. I want this to be a team effort, not something that we get stuck on our desk and ask to, you know...
I think the only difference is the fact that they will present their thoughts on the matter within two years. If they do it faster than that, still, the town's responsibility then to respond and work through the document.
What I'm hearing is a difference, it's a slight shift, but it's instead of having something handed to us that we then edit, I believe, Mr. Mayor is talking about being a part of the process from the beginning with a consultant, so that we're not in the same position we were with the UDO, I mean, the PDD ordinance and the other things. I think it was, I agree, I think it will smooth the process if it's done together as a cooperative, collaborative piece. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Mayor, could we, using the same terminology that's in here, simply state that this master plan, the applicant will submit for consideration within that two years, working cooperatively with the town to produce that? We are talking about the difference between a rezoning request is what is before you tonight, and a legal contract, which is before you when we get to the development agreement. There are two different processes, but if we want to make it clear that it would be cooperative and jointly worked on through the process, we're happy to do that.
I think I say jointly, seems like a good word, collaborative.
If it's always our intention to do so, Mr. Bruce Beck has made it very clear that that's what he expected from us.
Are you happy with that, Commissioner?
Well, read me the sentence, as you would modify it.
"Applicant, the applicant working cooperatively with the town will submit..." I'll just insert it back.
Or working in partnership?
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing regarding that. As Mr. Culpepper said, they have the staff to go ahead and get started with this, and we do not at this point. What is wrong with them going ahead with their agreement and all, and then, as we have staff come on board, go along with it and follow up with this?
Well, from my point of view, what's wrong with it is that if a contractual document like that gets written by the legal representation of one party, and the other party doesn't get to see it until the document's complete, then the document tends to be written from the point of view of the attorney of the client who hired them to write it, and I don't want it to be that way.
And working, I don't know, I disagree with you on that, because I don't feel like that's the way we would handle it. You know, we would be hiring a consultant also to follow up on this.
Not if it's written like this. What he's suggesting would allow us to hire a consultant. This would mean they create it and hand it to us with some input, but he's suggesting that we work cooperatively with the consultant.
Agreed, yeah.
We'll work cooperatively with anybody that you want us to work cooperatively with. But, and we will start it, and we will keep whoever this party is, whether it's current staff or hired staff, we will keep them involved and work cooperatively from the beginning to the end. And how many words that takes to be said, we have to include that.
I think what you said is sufficient, as far as I'm concerned, but I do, I don't think the idea was for you to go in and complete it and just hand it over to our staff.
It was.
Because we, our staff would not go for that. We have an attorney, we have a town manager, and they would review that and say, no, this is not what we want.
It was originally created as a...
They would just hand it over.
It was originally created as an obligation for us to get started on getting this done, because if you want it done, we want it done as quickly as possible, whatever it takes to make the town comfortable in that process, and the wording here, we're happy to work with.
But adding that cooperatively would be...
Cooperatively, and working with whatever party the town wishes us, by the direction of the manager to work with, we're happy to do this.
That would be fine, if you add such...
And do we need to add funded by the developer, for a consultant?
You already have it funded.
Okay.
If you approve, you can...
Well, now I feel a little back into the corner here. I'd almost rather change my recommendation and have this say that the town will produce the initial draft, and present it to the developer for review. How's that feel to everybody?
I don't care for that. I think the way this is written says that they have an obligation to work on a development agreement with us. It's their obligation to get things started. Of course, the town will be involved. There will not be an agreement unless the town has fully vetted the plan. It's a legal document, we're going to hire consultants to help, we've got very able staff to help. That's the way an agreement is made. Somebody makes an offer, you make a counter offer. That's the way it's going to work. And they're taking the initiative, and we've given them a deadline to get this done in two years.
But you have to go back to saying that they'll create it and we'll say yes or no, but I think the whole point is...
I don't think that's what I'm saying.
Okay, good.
He's saying, that whether you're sitting at the table together, or whether you are doing it via email, or however you're doing it, somebody's going to say, this is my idea. And somebody's going to say, well, this is my idea.
It's part of the process the whole way, I think that's what's important.
We could never get to an agreement unless we went back and forth. It'd be a natural process, and we're saying they have to initiate it.
I'm not as concerned about this language as you guys are. I mean, you have to, at the end of the day, you have to be comfortable with whatever you put in this document, and the result for me will be the same. We will not, we will not carry an agreement to you for your review and approval we're not comfortable with from a staff and consultant perspective. So, however you guys want to phrase that is fine. To get there, I mean, Mr. Culpepper and I, Mr. Smith and I, Mr. Rawl and I, talk on a fairly regular basis about a lot of these issues that have gone into this document to this point. It hasn't been a unilateral process. And the development agreement in and of itself, by extension, would not be a unilateral process. It's an agreement. So, I, whatever language you guys want to draft and come up with, it's just, that's fine. Whatever you guys are comfortable with, we can still make it work.
Well, Commissioner Fiocco, the methodology that you're suggesting has been suggested by the developers, the same methodology that got us this master plan, and to see how long we've been chipping away at trying to get this to an agreement, and to quote Dr. Phil, I would ask, how's that working for you?
I don't understand the question. Is that, because we've heard all along that we're going too fast, and now we're not going fast enough. I don't, I mean, we've made a lot of progress, I think, in a short amount of time, using this process.
What is, I think, where the document originates?
Well, as you all can probably detect, I feel pretty strongly about this one. I don't want to be handed another plan from the developer and then ask them to nibble around the edges until I'm marginally satisfied with it. I'd like to start off from a better position than that. So, what's the will of the board? Commissioner Furrow, what do you want to do?
I would like to leave, I guess I'd like the developer to send the agreement in, and our staff analyze it before it comes to an order, with professional services, consultants.
Okay. Commissioner Baldwin?
I believe that Pittsboro, with a consultant and with the staff, needs to be a part of the process every step of the way. Not that we're given the document, that we then edit, that we are a part of the creation of the documents, all of the future documents, whether the UDO, everything. I think that, I agree, this has not worked well, it's created a lot of division on the board and on the town, having this vague document that we then tried to figure out and tried to chip away at need, Pittsboro, staff and board needs to be a part of every step of the way.
I think this is, I think our process has been cumbersome, but I think at the end of the day, the master plan in front of us today is far superior than to the product that was delivered a year ago. And it's a dynamic back and forth situation. It relies on a meeting of the minds to enter an agreement. I think the fact that we've said two years, I don't see anywhere in here that we do not acknowledge the fact that the town is at the table, being a party to the agreement. You can't have an agreement unless there are two parties who find agreement. The other things that we will be doing in this two-year period is not taking their master landscape plan and saying, okay, here it is, now it's incorporated into the project. Staff is going to review it, comment on it, make recommendations. Those will have to be approved as well. Every step of the way, through all of these elements, the town is at the table. We're asking them to deliver these products to us within two years. We are not in any way, shape, or form advocating our responsibility to manage this project and enter into these agreements. So, I am happy with the way it is. If you want to add the language that says cooperatively, you have to do that, because I think that's the way it's going to have to happen. I don't think the word has to be there for it to be de facto the way it's going to occur.
The towns need to be writing our own ordinances and not having somebody else writing for us and then give them, I think that's the point of the way to say, to let's be...
Well, the agreement is not an ordinance.
I know.
An ordinance is a unilateral thing that we can...
But when you start talking about these things up here, see, you're just applying to Chatham Park?
Correct. Yep, exactly.
Commissioner Baldwin, your comments?
Yes, I'd prefer to have the language to say cooperatively with the town in reference to the one that otherwise is fine.
Mr. Turner?
I agree. I think with cooperatively needs to be added, but I've never thought this was something that they were just going to do themselves. I mean, I really did think that they would start from day one with the town. I mean, I guess, two words, day one.
Okay, Mr. Culpepper, if you'll make that modification, to insert the word cooperatively or other such word to indicate that it's a joint effort, that seems to be the will of the board. of the board. I have one more question for, from Mr. Messick, the attorney, and it's as follows. He's, he's already seen it and answered me, but I'd like to hear him explain to the rest of the board. My question is, with the respect to the legal concept of vested rights of a developer, what vested rights will accrue to the developer upon approval of the rezoning? Do you accept developer's representation that after rezoning, the town will remain in control of the process because we will have an opportunity to review small area plans and disprove any that we find to be inconsistent with the Chatham Park master plan? To what extent will the vested rights of the developer limit our ability to require changes in future small area plans?
Well, vested right in the sense that you're using it is for a site-specific development plan. There is no site-specific development plan involved in this rezon, not yet anyway. Small area plans would presumably be the site-specific development plan that will give vested rights. And we've already just talked about this tonight. The only vested right is an entitlement that the developer will have. You all approve this rezoning in this, in this master plan for the density of 22,000 dwelling units and 220 million square feet of commercial space. I don't think anything else is vested in the sense that, except for the development standards that are set forth in, in the master plan. So to the extent that you're talking about a legal vested right, I'm not sure that I understand you other than that.
Okay, I understand your response. Any questions from the board? Okay. And I have a question for, I don't know which, who of our staff is here is, is Mr. Royal with us tonight?
He's on vacation.
On vacation. This is a, just a general question directed to Mr. Bass, and if Mr. Royal's not here, Mr. Horn. And it's simply, are you satisfied that the current version of the Chatham Park master plan meets all the current critical needs of the town as a compliance with our PDD ordinance and is consistent with the land use plan? Or are there in your mind unresolved issues that you would like to see resolved before master plan approval? I'll offer you the microphone.
I would say that the fact that so much material has been, going to be developed during the next two years implies that the way, as it's submitted, it does not meet the requirements now. However, that'll be done within the next two years. I do agree with the elimination of the section in there regarding the small area plan process and approval. I don't think that's appropriate for the master plan.
Okay, that's the end of my questions. And I guess I'll just, before I yield the floor, I will just say for the record that I, with all due respect to my peers on the planning board, I do not feel that this master plan is consistent with our land use plan in terms of either the densities that it proposes or the minimalistic provision of open space in parks and recreation facilities. At a minimum, it falls short in those areas and possibly in others.
I feel I need to also say that I feel that we've granted this development a great deal of density, and I don't feel we've got enough in return. And we haven't gone far enough to protect our drinking water. With that said, if this, if this passes, I will jump on board and, and give it my best to support you all. So.
Well, as I mentioned a little while ago, I think this master plan has matured, and I think it's the product of a lot of hard work on the staff's part, a lot of listening to the numerous public hearings that we've had, and working with the developer in a partnership to try to find that balance where we can invite economic development into the town with a applicant who I think has shown extraordinary good faith in their negotiations and discussions with the town. There are very few, perhaps none other applicants in the development business who are willing to accept a condition that limits their ability to do land development, to get a return on their investment, until they completely satisfy the town with 13 or 14 additional elements. It's a remarkable statement and belief in the goodwill of the town to be a good partner with the developer.
Look what they're getting for it. That's the point.
Excuse me, sir. Please, not interrupt.
I don't know why economic development is seen as one-sided. I don't see other folks making investments in this town as these gentlemen are proposing to do. They've got a good track record of being a good developer. This, this document that we have here has interjected greater amenities into this project than would otherwise be achieved by multiple developers coming in one at a time, asking for a rezoning, doing a subdivision, doing a site plan. The fact that we're looking at a comprehensive plan is a very good thing for Pittsburgh. With that, I make a motion that we approve.
Mr. Secretary?
You don't have to do it.
We have a motion seconded for adoption of the Chatham Park master plan and approval of a rezoning to the Plan Development District. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
If the motion passes by a vote of four to one. And I would like to add at the end of this proceeding that while I have some issues with the master plan, I will share with my fellow board members and the public that over the last several months, from time to time, I've been approached by other elected officials from areas where Preston Development works, and I've consistently gotten complimentary comments from mayors, commissioners, other elected officials, town managers who are familiar with working with Preston Development, and they characterize your company as being highly respected and responsible corporate citizens in their communities. And that makes me feel a little better because I think we're taking a lot on faith here and we're having to trust that you're going to do the right thing. And I would just ask that you don't disappoint us and live up to that reputation that you've got. Congratulations. If you have conversations that you'd like to have, please, please take them to the lobby and let us conclude our business. Thank you. Next item of business is manager's update on capital projects. On mayoral updates, I have not had a meeting with the EDC recently, so I don't have a great deal to add there. RPO, have you had anything?
No.
Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
We had a meeting scheduled and again had no forum, so we rescheduled it for the end of the summer.
Okay.
When I have updates on it.
Okay, fairgrounds association?
I don't have any.
Okay. Pittsburgh Downtown Business Association?
I think we can probably save that for next Monday.
We're not going to talk anyway?
Yeah.
Individual commissioner concerns, Commissioner Farrell?
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Mr. Colby? Mr. Fiocco?
Uh, yeah, I would like for us to, as quickly as possible, put an advertisement out for vacancies on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. As of this June 30th, we will have all eight vacancies on the board, so we need to fill those as quickly as possible.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Baldwin?
The only concern is that, actually, it's not a concern. I will be going to the legislature on 17th of June to meet with some of the General Assembly to discuss different issues with them based on, with the Triangle J Council of Governments as its chairman. So basically, if you all have any concerns, please let me know, and I'll be glad to bring those up when I meet.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
I don't have anything at this time, thanks.
Okay, thank you. With that, we are at the end of our meeting. We have one. Do a call.
I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to the letter from Triangle J concerning the emergence of response in security planning committee, which talks about facility, a training facility for EMS and different police officers and police departments to be held. Hopefully, they're trying to build one facility and have that particular training facility enough to come, to allow different departments to come there and train. So basically, if you all would just review that letter and see what you think about that, that would be great.
Could I add something about that? But this was discussed at the most recent CAG Regional Managers Meeting. If you'll note, they are looking at our contribution, their second phase of their, what amounts basically a feasibility study on that regional facility. So that would be something that we likely exercise in this next year, but they need a response on that, I consider, really. So I included it as an effort, just sort of prying you for that, and we'll be bringing it up, I think, maybe in the next meeting or so.
Mr. Manning, would it be prudent to take that out of this year's budget rather than, or do you want it budgeted in the upcoming year?
I can do it either way.
Yeah. If you've got a surplus, you might want to get us to agree to do that at the next meeting, and that way you can-
I, I forget. I kind of say that because I forget exactly when they're checking to do. I think they're really looking at, you know, whether or not the communities that we identified would be one of the participating.
Okay, thanks. There being no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.